Trenton City Council meeting Thursday, March 21st. This meeting is hereby called to order. Let us stand for the flag salute.
Aye.
Good pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, which we give God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed with the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Role call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Present.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Presente.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present and presente.
Y present también. And Council President Feliciano?
Yo estoy aquí. Presente.
Está bien. Myself, Brandon L. Garcia, municipal clerk, presente. Edward Cologie is excused from this meeting. And in for Mr. Wes Bridges is Mr. Scott Micky-O.
Presente.
Está bien. On your call, Madam President.
Let's continue.
Certainly. And Madam President, while I cannot do this in Spanish, I would happily read you the invocation.
Thank you.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And Madam President, as I see it, we have some recognitions to be handed out today?
Yes, we're going to start with Councilwoman Frisbee in her pavilion renaming in honor of Ms. Grace Crossland. Reverend Lois K. Alexander asked for a few moments as she should be in transit to get here. So we'll start in that order. Thank you.
I'll talk real slow. So. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming out. And this resolution, most, the majority of the City of Trenton knows about Ms. Grace Crossland, who's an icon, a pillar in our community. And I'm going to ask, when I'm finished reading this, that Mr. Stacy Heding come, because he's the one that first came to me with this idea. And I thought it was phenomenal that he would think he had the community to honor Ms. Grace Crossland in this manner. The City Council, City of Trenton, a resolution naming the pavilion at Cat Walter Park after Grace Crossland. Whereas Grace Crossland is one of Trenton's most outstanding citizens with a long history of accomplishments and significant contributions to the City of Trenton. And whereas Grace was born in Asbury Park and raised in Trenton, the daughter of the late Bishop Elijah Jones in Levada, I hope that said that Levada Jones. She graduated the Trenton Public School System, attended Trenton State College, and received an associate degree from Bible College. She married, she married the late Robert H. Crossland and went off to have five beautiful daughters. And whereas Grace worked for the Trenton Board of Education for over 30 years, having served at the Parker Elementary School and Grace L. Dunn Middle School. In addition to her teaching role, she served as head of the PTA, coach of the girls' basketball team, and she, and head of the Special Events Committee, where she played an integral role in planning special events for students, parents, and teachers to recognize and celebrate the diverse cultures of the City of Trenton and its surrounding communities. And whereas Grace also spent over 27 years working in various positions with the City, with the Trenton Department of Parks and Recreation, including park rangers and ultimately park ranger supervisor, as well as various security positions to ensure that the city was safe for all of its residents. She also held positions with the Lawrence Township School District and STEM Civics Charter School in Ewing. And whereas some full life and someone full of life and vigor, Grace loved her family and served her community in so many ways, helping our youth as well as our senior citizens. She served on numerous committees, including as president of the School Leadership Council at Dunn Middle School, and vice president of the Board of Trustees for the Emily Fisher Charter School. She volunteered for Parents Anonymous, donated her time to pastoral care for hospital patients, and was a PTO volunteer, a daycare center volunteer part, a daycare center volunteer participant in community mentoring membership program throughout the City of Trenton. And we, and was honored in 2019 by having a team nage in her honor at Mary Reed-Gusior's Basketball Classic Game Event. And whereas Grace was a graduate of the Trenton Police Academy and also received numerous awards for such organizations as Cherished Children, Black Image Awards, and the PTA for her dedicated years of service to the Trenton School District and the City of Trenton. And whereas having been called the face of Trenton, Grace has amazed a record of service and accomplishment which personifies what every citizen should strive to be and is worthy of emulation by all residents of Trenton. And whereas the City Council of the City of Trenton has deemed it proper and fitted to honor Grace Crossland by naming the pavilion in Cat Walter Park after her as a permanent tribute in recognition of one of Trenton's most remarkable citizens. Now, it is therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton that the pavilion at Cat Walter Park shall henceforth be known as the Grace Crossland Pavilion. It is further resolved that appropriate signage be erected to effectuate the foregoing. And it is furthermore resolved that this resolution shall be, shall take effect pursuant to law. And it is signed by all members of council, Josie M. Edwards, Teska Frisbee, Joseph Harrison, Yasminelli Gonzalez, Jennifer Williams, Jennifer Figueroa-Kettenberg, Vice President, and Crystal Feliciano President. On this day, we thank you and we are appreciative of her services. And Mr. Heding, I would ask that you would come forward to say some words on her behalf.
Look at this. Okay. Thank you, council, for just looking into this and handling this with care. This means a lot to not just me, but it really means a lot to this family right here. Could y'all please stand? The Crossland family, the mother, the grandchildren, the children. These are the people that lent their mother and grandmother tirelessly to the city. So the times they didn't get to spend time with her, she was out doing the things that made this city and help what it is. I talked to a lot of workers and park rangers and people that work with Grace Crossland, and I hear nothing but great things. She is a beacon in our community. And during, she passed away during the height of COVID. She didn't have COVID, but she passed away during the height of COVID. And I remember standing outside the funeral home. I don't know, I know Mrs. Mene was with me, and I'm not sure, Kai, if you were with me. But what I remember was the family coming out. And at that time at Hugh's funeral, there can only be about 15 or 20 people there. And for an icon, I said, man, I wish we could put her away better when more people get to celebrate her. So what we did was held the city. We said, you know what? Let's make a billboard for her. And the billboard kind of, it read like Mother of the City. And it had all of these multiple pictures of her and all the things, like the roles that she played in the city. And then the family came out and we blessed the billboard. And if you look on my Facebook page, you'll see this video we put together. It's about a 15-minute video that the city allowed us to come in here and just give thanks to her and video it. And I'll never forget that. And we'll never forget this day. So just thank you so much. This day here means so much, not just for the City of Trenton, but more importantly, for this family right here. So let's just give them a round of applause again.
Madam President, if I could say one more thing?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say to the family, Stacy said it right. Your mom was in our community. I can't, can't imagine how much time she could not have been with you because she was out there mothering so many of us, including, including my own family. So we want to say thank you to you because you had to share her with all of us. She was a woman of elegance. She didn't take no tea for the cough, no sugar for the tea. And that's why she had the great respect. If she told you to stop doing something one time, she did not need to repeat herself. If she did, you were in trouble. But I loved Ms. Grace. She, I had the pleasure of being around in her midst quite a bit when my husband headed the Parks and Recreation Department. And she was just a sweetheart. She was, she, she was authentic, and I can appreciate that. And so I just want to say thank you to you. Thank you for giving and sharing your mom with all of us. It does not go, but I don't take it for granted. And sometimes we do take pillars like that in our community, that they're just going to be there and that, yeah, they're supposed to be there. Although they actually have a family. So we thank you for sharing her with us.
Council President?
So I just want to quickly also thank the family for sharing her with us for so, so many years. I mean, I've known her, she's known me since I was a baby. And I want to thank Stacy for bringing this to us originally with this idea and Councilwoman Frisbee for actually executing this really quickly. She's very deserving of all of this. And I just wanted to share this story because, like I said, she's known me since she was, since I was a baby. And she was really, really close to my father's brother. They were really, really close, Dunn Middle School, all of the years growing up. And when my father passed away, we had already did the funeral arrangements and everything was in order. And she came up to me, she said, yes, I really want to speak. I really just need to say a few words. I know you have a list of people, but I needed. And I was like, you can't say no to her for anything. So I wasn't going to say no. And I'm like, okay, I didn't think that you would want to because I knew she had a relationship with my uncle, but not, I didn't know it was necessarily my father. She said, I'll be 30 seconds. She said, I just got to say one thing. I said, no problem. She gets up on there and when I tell you she tore the funeral down with singing, she did not stay up there for one, one minute. She was up there for about five. But it was just so touching because I know how much it meant to her, and that always sticks with me to this day. So thank you so much. I loved her like she was one of my family members. So I appreciate you all sharing her with me also.
Council President?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I also echo the sentiments of my colleagues and would like to thank you for sharing her with us. She spent a lot of her last years in Cat Water Park. And she was a mother to everyone out there. I met her back in 2013 or 14, when I first did a family fun day in a park and did all these movies under the stars with some of my friends, and she was so helpful. She kept everyone in order. We did not need extra security. She had it, she had it. And everyone knew not to play with her. We went incident-free every single time. And she loves my sister. My sister's a baker, and she bakes pound cakes and red velvet cupcakes, which was her favorite. So every time I brought my kids to the park, she goes, where your sister adding cakes? So I made sure every time I, well, not every time, but a lot of the times I made sure she got her pound cakes and she got her red velvet cupcakes. And my daughters adore her. And I'm so glad to be a part of this and making this happen because it's well deserved. I wish we could honor her in a much larger way. But this is a great start. So thank you again.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say, come on up, babe. I just wanted to say that this is wonderful to everyone that put this together, to Stacy, to all the councilwomen that were a part of making this happen. It is always wonderful when we can honor those that do great things in our community. And so we are grateful for the service, right, of Ms. Crossland and, and the life that she lived and the example that she set for those of us that are coming up along the way. So it is our pleasure and our honor to be able to honor her in such a way. So God bless you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I wrote it because I knew I probably only get like two minutes to talk. First, I would like to thank the man above for blessing me to be Ms. Grace's daughter, an amazing, graceful, and spiritual woman. Thanks to Stacy for spearheading this moment. And thanks to the mayor, the council, and all other administrators in the community for your unwavering commitment to notice and salute to my mom for her outstanding performance, not just as a public servant, but as a community activist as well. Okay. Okay, I'm going to make this quick. I'm sorry. Because every time I talk about my mom, tears still swell up in my eyes. Ms. Grace says she was known to most work for the board in the city for over 30-something years. She was full of life, loved her family and her community, served on several communities throughout the city. Ms. Grace says she was known throughout the city for her caring, kind, and thoughtful ways. She had a good rapport with people of all ages, especially the little ones or youth. She was one of those people that when she came into your space, she made her presence known. She would make you stop talking and simply listen to her and learn from her wisdom, often because you couldn't shut her up otherwise. She saw her work as God's work. She lived her testimony by showing love and kindness to all. Again, I just want to thank everyone. Thanks, her family.
So we'll move on to the next presentation. And then afterwards, we'll do pictures and stuff with. Yes, ma'am? Okay.
Good evening to everyone. I just want to say one thing, one wonderful thing about Mrs. Grace Crossland. She loved to sing. When you talked about your father's funeral, she was at a lot of funerals. And whether she was on the program or not, you were not going to stop her from singing. She had a beautiful voice. And as we honor her memory today, we also have to remember that she was a person with the gift of song. So thank you so much for honoring her. Blessings to the family. We all loved her so much, not more than you did, but we loved her a lot. So thank you so much. Peace and blessings on your journey. She lived a beautiful life, and we honor her memory. Thank you.
So next, we have a special recognition. Yes? The God of, okay, I'm sorry. Yes?
My name is Jerry Tyron de Foulas. I live on 720 St. Quentin Avenue. And I worked with Ms. Grace for the past five years at Emily Fisher Charter School as a, as a board member. And believe me or not, we used to call her Mother Without Border. I don't know if someone know that. The reason is this lady, believe me or not, I'm from Liberia anyway. And she called, she also called me the Liberian son. And then so sad, I call Muna. I don't know who know Muna Brown. She used to be in the Trenton School System. That was a Liberian daughter. I told her about this honoring today. And I just want to thank you all for doing this. She deserved it. And I'm glad I didn't miss it because the daughter informed me today. I know Ruby know me. So I thank you for doing it, even allowing me to talk. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your kind words. The family, I'm sure, appreciates it, as do we. Okay. So next, we're going to move to another special recognition honoring Reverend Lois K. Alexander. So whereas Reverend Lois K. Alexander, mother of Isabel Danielle and Joshua Benjamin, serves as a senior pastor of the Life Abundant Church of God Trenton, New Jersey. She holds a bachelor's degree in church and Christian ministries and is certified in basic biblical counseling. Reverend Lois affirms that her first two professors of the word and life are her beloved parents, the late Elder Samuel and Lila Key. And whereas Reverend Lois hails from a family of preachers and grew up singing in the Church of God, her father passed her for 28 years. In addition to ministering in the church, she enjoys ministering at nursing homes and hospitals and has cheered the hearts of many with a special affection and appreciation for the elderly. A spirited woman, she has a rare ability to reach her audience as she works in ministry, both privately and publicly. And whereas Reverend Lois served faithfully for 14 years as co-pastor under her husband, the late Elder Leon S. Alexander Jr., during his 17-year pastoral leadership. In August 2021, Reverend Lois's beloved husband of 31 years transitioned from time to eternity. And upon his death, Reverend Lois was unanimously accepted by the congregation to assume the ministry responsibility of senior pastor. In May 2022, after 35 years of service, Reverend Lois retired from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And whereas she is the founder and president of Women of Purpose, a ministry with a Christian foundation which seeks to empower and give support and encouragement to women and teenage girls of all ages, cultures, and social backgrounds. Under her leadership, the Women of Purpose established the Hem of His Garment Ministry, Heart-to-Heart Women's Sessions. The Seasons of Life Ministry focuses on the stage of a woman's life, not the age. The Suzy Johnson McCoy Book Scholarship Award, which has awarded over $30,000 to persons involved in college and/or technical school. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey hereby recognizes Reverend Lois K. Alexander for her tremendous contributions to the City of Trenton and the surrounding areas. She is a true beacon of light exhibiting the goodness that Trenton makes. Presented this 21st day of March 2024, Trenton City Council.
Wow. That's what I had to say. Good evening to the council, all of the members of the council and to everyone assembled. Let me give a special shout out to the women as we celebrate this month of March, Women's History Season with the theme, Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. I am so grateful to God for, he is number one in my life. I'm grateful for all of the strong women of my life, and particularly one of the strongest I've ever known, my beloved mother, the late Mrs. Lila Key. I want to thank Council President Crystal Feliciano. I call her one of the hardest-working women in the City of Trenton for acknowledging me along with the committee. When I think of all the beautiful, brilliant, and bold women I know who would be so deserving of this honor, I am humbled to have been chosen. I really am. I'm grateful that my son, our son and our daughter, are here to witness this and join me in this honor. I celebrate every one of my sisters, those who make a difference in the lives of others, both privately and publicly, and who continue to fulfill purpose and promise. I will conclude with this. I will continue to make this declaration for my life. I cannot help everybody, but I can certainly help somebody. As I pass along, then my living words echoed from that great song will not be in vain. Again, to the council, thank you, thank you, thank you.
So Reverend Alexander, I just want to thank you again for all the tremendous work that you do in the community, for the work that goes noticed by many, but in the background for many as well, for the silent prayers that you pray for us, whether we ask you or not, for the covering that you give to the people that are under your leadership, for the prayers that you extend to the people in the City of Trenton, and for your hard works that you do to make sure that we are all okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll take a couple pictures real quick and then we'll get back to the meeting. Is that okay? We're going to go right in the back corner. So we will have Ms. Crossland's family first. If we'll go right back in that back corner, please. So if everyone here would just bear with us a moment as we do this, thank you. Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
You can continue.
Certainly. Madam President, at this time, we've reached a point of public comment. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And for the public, public comment is five minutes for each individual. You may address the council with anything that you wish. Please understand the council is not obligated to respond. So for all coming up for public comment, please do state your name and address for the record. Our first individual listed for public comment is Mike Davis.
Good afternoon, council.
Good evening.
My address, 225 North Clinton Avenue. I was employed with the City of Trenton for 30 years as a police officer. This council signed a contract in June of '23. At this point, there's still a group of us waiting for our retro money that's not been paid. Trying to find the status of that, who to talk to. Our Oprah requests have been denied by members of the city and the law department. So basically, we're trying to find out where our money is. So I'm quite sure no one here is gonna answer tonight, but we'll put it on the record for you. Thank you.
Matt Bledsoe.
Counsel, good evening. You can list my addresses, 225 North Clinton Avenue as well. I retired from the City of Trenton in 2021 after 15 years as a police officer. Since that time, as Mike Davis stated, council has signed a new contract that we're entitled to retro pay for. I've been since January emailing every member of council, the city clerk, the mayor's office, and the business administrator with almost little to no response. I've been given some responses, but no answers. I was directed to Kendra Davis at the city, at the police department, who also provided no answers. I was advised by Ms. Edwards, an inquiry would be opened up, and I'd be advised of the outcome as to where our payments are. That was approximately a month ago. To date, no response. I'm here tonight to find out, why not? Why am I, as retiree of this city, after leaving here after 15 years of service, denied payment for the money that's rightfully mine, along with the other retirees? To go on record to simply say that in 2019, when I was an active employee, when this contract is valid for, when you pull the paperwork to pay the people that are still active employees, you had to remove my name off of the list to pay people. Why was I skipped? Why was every other retiree skipped that was an employee in 2019, in 2020, '21, and finally in '23? They had to be removed off the list. Who ordered that? Why? We come here tonight for answers. We know we're not gonna get them. But at least now it's on the record, and no one on this council, the business administrator, the law department, or the clerk's office can die not having any knowledge. I O2 have done Oprah requests. Some have been approved, and just recently, one was denied with no reason given other than denied. Thank you.
Tony. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble here. Petlo Crossland? No worries. No problem. Charles, is that L-E-W-N? Lou, thank you.
Good evening, council. And this time, it's on a good note. I just want to give thanks to city council and a special thanks to Ms. Gonzalez, because that's the one I mostly was dealing with with the emails, with the liaison to the mayor with this situation. 198 Pennington Avenue, that's where I'm at. I meant to say. Moving forward, again, I say I appreciate everybody's candor with my situation that I've dealt with over the last four years. A lot of people don't come back and give thanks to where their situation came from. And I'm one that does that, and I appreciate it. And again, I said, moving forward, what I want to do with that lot, I already went in the process of the city to try to obtain that lot. It's almost 3,751 square foot, which is about $7,500, which I'm willing to get that right now as we speak to obtain that property, whatever is necessary. And I feel that I should be the first right to get that property. I never went after the city for any of the damages to my house because I had a projection what I'm gonna do once it's tore down. So I need city council to try to help me to obtain and help the city to help me guide that property so I can do something special with it. I got four generations of family. My great-grandmother and father, my grandmother and father, my mother and father, my oldest sister. So I want to change it into something special, along with my brother with Canachi Art, if anybody know about that, and you ain't telling you, to do some type of monuments and even go to monument school with the permission of the Board of Education. I don't just want to walk in any school, but I want to take those little kids and I want to try to teach them something about greenery, about making the flower pots, about doing little walkways. Because you gotta start them when they little. The kids, when they get 16, 17 years old, they already pretty much set in their ways. So I want to go all the way to the bottom, to the younger kids, and try to get them a guidance on this with this lot for my own resources. I'm not asking the city for anything. This is all my resources. You know, like I said, I'm retired, I'm chief engineer at the hotel. I'm not wanting for anything. I own that property and I own everything I got. But now it's my objective to take what are my skills and ability and try to teach some of these young kids and give them a guidance in this, in my work, you know? So that's my objective. I already got the application. Like I said, I only got a few minutes. I pretty much said what I had to say. I just need council moving forward to try to help me in a way to make it easy for me to obtain that lot. I got all pictures from the beginning to the end from the demo, which I'm just a picture fanatic. That's me. Because picture tells a thousand words. So they already begun on 202 Pennington Avenue, and I'm grateful for that because now that was the only I saw in that neighborhood. So again, I thank city council for doing their job. Thank you.
Let's see. Letitia Peters?
Thank you. My name is Letitia Peters. And I would first like to thank Councilwoman Cristo Feliciano for answering my questions. I presented to her a host of questions that was on the mind of not only me, but also of the city of Trentonians. And a lot of people don't know that she actually took several days, her and a group of people, to answer about 30 questions that are presented to her. But there were still some things that were left unanswered. And one of the things was about noise, audience. I live in the West Side, Trenton, and I asked one of the neighbors to not have her radio so loud on a Sunday morning. And she actually called me her name and told me, "Don't knock on my window. Don't antagonize me." I'm like, "It's Sunday morning, and your radio's too loud." I mean, where we live, if it's silence, it actually bounces off the wall of the houses. And I think that we need to really look into some of the people who are moving to our neighborhoods and what they are doing to disrupt other neighbors who have been there for 40, 50 years. And another thing is that we have found dog mess in our yard. I have videos of dogs running loose with no tags, and people are just running around with no bags. And we have found, I mean, my parents are 80 years old. They should not be picking up dog mess in their front yard because someone is allowing their dogs to run wild in the evening. And by the morning, we find all this dog mess in our yard. And I have requested the city to look into why they never had cameras put into in our area. Because where I lived at, there were a lot of complaints about the greenhouse on Stuyvesant Avenue. And a lot of people complained about this greenhouse. And despite numerous complaints, the police department did not put up a camera. And I have called about drugs, chemicals, that has affected my life and recently being exposed to gas leaks. And I have a life-threatening seizures, blackouts, which I never had when I first moved back from Maryland, worked in Washington, DC. And my health has gone down incredibly because the police have actually had audacity to tell me that no one's gonna help you. And guess what? They have not helped me. They have not helped the people who have been here for 40 or 50 years. And I would like to know, what's the outcome of the report that was being done looking to the abuse of power by the police? Is there an outcome? Or is that still being worked out? Because my mother actually called about the noise. I mean, 8:00 PM at night, and not one police officer came out. No one should be sitting around with noise for a whole hour. And the police have never responded to our request in about 10 years now. And I believe because it is me, I am the one being targeted. And I can prove it beyond reasonable doubt now. And no one should be antagonized and harassed by any other Trentonian because they can't. I know my time is up, but I also want to look into contracts because I am sure that in the past, I answered, I was concerned about the way that contracts are being handled by the city council, that no one's really looking to contracts. And these contracts are going past their expired date, and people are still being...
Council President? Let me ask a question. The neighborhood or street that this lady? I didn't get that. Yeah, just Ms. Peters? And gases and stuff. Ms. Peters, can you give us your address, please? Thank you. 1462...
We have it listed, if you want it.
I didn't hear right. I just want to make sure, particularly with the gases and some of the issues. That's very important.
Oh, no, no worries. Just in case you didn't have it, we have it for you.
All right. Thank you.
I see Jay Tyrone. Please help me with the last name, starts with a K.
One last thing, I'm sorry. Ms. Peters? So I'm not sure, but based upon the inquiry, and I know that I've addressed you myself as well. If you'll stick around until our civic comment, if you have a moment, some of us may address or touch on something that you said. That's why we moved civic comment up, so that way people would stick around to hear what we had to say if we wanted to answer you back at that time, okay? Thank you. All right. Thank you, hon. Ms. Peters?
Gonzo, I want to thank you all very much for helping Mr. Harrison because I live on 726 Quentin Avenue. And, you know, he passed there one time. His speed were really, really bad. And I was one of those who talked to him about it. And he gave us the assurance that something we're gonna work on now, go ahead and run. No, I can't speed anymore. There's a speed bomb that was put there. I want to thank you all for that. That's all. You remember that?
Thank you.
Let's see. Monroe Laramore.
Good evening. My name is Monroe Laramore. I live at 260 North Willow Street. And this is the greatest city. And I was just want to say something about the woman Bernice. Her name is Bernice Munce Towers. That's where we live. And so you congratulating women who did a great job for the city. And she must have been somebody special. Our place is named after her, so she must have been very effective in making change for the city. As far as the police situation go, we need to make sure that the police are held accountable for a lot of things that are going on, like police profiling of people who haven't done anything wrong. And we need the police director to be on the site where there are complaints about police, not be in headquarters, because when you're in headquarters, you're really not doing anything to solve any problems. That's like you're on the front lines, but trouble on the front lines, but the police is in headquarters. That's not doing us any good. There are some police officers who have helped me with a heavy food cart. Some have helped me be safely on my way. But there are too many cops out there that are just playing cold-blooded. They just don't care. And we need to put a stop to police riding around in tent-to-window cars, you know? We need awful friendly cops that will communicate with the people.
Robin Crossland? No worries. Shakira Crossland? Watch this, guys. Sharon Crossland? Cynthia Crossland? I'm just doing my job here. Nakia Crossland? Okay. And Leslie Wilborn?
Good evening, council and citizens. I just have two issues. One is why the rents are so incredibly high in the city of Trenton. Just out of curiosity, I saw a house on Martin Luther King Boulevard, and it had an open house sign on it. So I went in just to see, you know, what the rent would be for this house. And the rent was like $2,400 for this house. And when I said this was an ungodly house, it was unbelievable. I also asked the landlord, I said, "Well, what do you plan on doing with the backyard?" Because it was a mess. He said, "Oh, nothing. The potential tenants will have to deal with that." I think it's that in the city of Trenton, we have a lot of low-income families, poor families. And I just think it's ridiculous. I think it's asinine that... I think it's asinine that, you know, rents are so high. And then on a property that is so dilapidated? My question is, how do they get an occupant, something to occupy this house? I don't understand that. That's number one. And I just think that that's something that really needs to be addressed. It's already out of hand. It's not getting out of hand. And I think that the citizens of Trenton that are potential renters or those that are already renting and their rents are skyrocketing, I think it really needs to be addressed. And also, I had previously required about the rent stabilization board that apparently there was a posting for. I wasn't at a couple of the previous meetings. I'm not sure if it was addressed or not. But if not, I would like to, you know, still, you know, get an update on that. And also, I'd just like to thank, I don't know if I'm thanking the council or thanking the neighbors or whoever, but the rooster issue we had, it has been resolved. I don't know if you said anything, or they had to, you know, the roosters for dinner or what. Anyway, they're going. Thank God for that. And just one other thing, I hear, I'm not sure, I heard the moderator say that the council does not have to comment on anything that we say. And I think that's kind of ridiculous because as a citizen, I think that we voted you in, and I think we deserve an answer. We deserve a response or a comment about our concerns. That's why we're here. And that's basically all I have to say. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Ms. Wilborn? So to your, to your last statement of what you said, typically, it has been practiced that they would move through, right? So we can get to hear what everyone says. I moved the civic comment up on the agenda. It used to be last on the agenda. I moved it up on the agenda because most times, the council will answer during that time. And because we would do the business of the city in between, and it would take so long, people would leave after they made their public comment. So they will address you just when it's our civic comment time, which is coming up next now. So we will answer if, if someone wants to answer to you, if they have the answer or would have you. So we're not, we listened, and we understand that people want to answer. And so we're looking to accommodate that request. What's your address again? Oh, the address of the property on MLK. Okay, so if you could just get that and just send it over, we'll take care of looking into that, okay? Thank you. Jorge?
Council President, we've reached the end of public comment, and we are now at civic comment.
Okay. I'm going to ask Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg to take it for a moment. Mr. Mikkio, can I sit right here for a moment? Thank you.
On your call, Vice President.
Yes. Okay, we'll proceed. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for being present. Just a quick couple of things. Before I forget, I want to say to Mr. Lewis, I think he left out already, but it was a collaborative effort to make sure that, that those properties came down. I know Councilwoman Frisbee and a couple of, I believe Edwards and Feliciano, we were working on that, also just stayed on top of that property being, coming down. So thank you to all of those who helped with that effort. To the retirees, officers, yes, you are entitled to your money. That is something that is out of our responsibility and duties. However, we have been looking into it, and I believe there should be responses given back to you all, but it doesn't come directly from council. As far as Ms. Lesley, who just spoke, we did speak about the rent stabilization board. We are hoping that that comes into fruition on the next council meeting. I'm hoping that they get the, the actual resolution of those who expressed interest. I believe they reached seven people who will be able to get on that board, so that way we can move certain things. But I can assure you that I spent the last two days with the attorneys, some of the people throughout the city, in City Hall, trying to work on something because it is getting ridiculous, not just with the rent increases, however, with the landlords who are trying to evict tenants because they are complaining or they're getting violations. And so to your point as to what the house looked like on the inside, just, just being transparent, that falls on the city. So we have, we have some enforcing to do. We're lacking in that area. We have lack, we don't have a lot of resources, so it's, it's, it's a domino effect at this point. We are working on, you know, making sure that each, I asked for a listing of all of those houses that are listed and registered as renters, because we don't have that information. And so there's a lot of things that are going on, and we're trying to really work on that. So if you can just please, you know, any suggestions you would like to bring, hopefully the board will be voted on in the next month, and then we can get the ball rolling as far as the rent stabilization piece of that. But to that, to that point, we are working, and it's a lot that we have to do. We are lacking a lot of resources. And so that does cause a domino effect as far as the inspections and making sure that everyone is legally renting to tenants. A couple of other announcements really quickly. The Trenton South Ward Neighborhood Association will be having, well, we have canceled our cleanup for this Saturday. It is going to be rescheduled because due to inclement weather that is supposed to be arriving. And I also just wanted to announce that the Trenton South Ward Neighborhood Association has launched our in-home library project, so if you know of any children who are in need of books, we are giving away books to put inside of their homes and exchange any time that they wish to do so. I believe that was all I have for this evening. Thank you all for being present.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Harrison?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the two honorees because, what's that? Because there are two special people that do wonderful things in this great city. My mother to all, Ms. Grace, wonderful person. The Reverend, he said everybody in this room here knows, and we want the best for everybody that comes in front of here. Also, we've seen here tonight that the police, we need to know what's going on with the retro money. Something has got to be done to figure out why they have not received a retro. It has to be taken care of, and it has to be addressed. Ms. Peters, she talked about the noise ordinance. My understanding, I think noise ordinance, if it goes to a certain amount any time of the day, it could be any level, as long as it's, yeah, any time of the day, whatever the level is, if it's, if it impedes on your neighbors to a point, then yes, the police should be out there to, to address that, because you're right, you should have a peace of quiet any day of the week, you know? You shouldn't be having to deal with that, shouldn't have to be dealing with people's dogs, the dog mess, that's, that's ridiculous.
Wilborn, they actually have a sign up that says peace, no noise, no noise status in the neighborhood. They actually have a sign. I was wondering if that could be implemented so that the people who come in would know that there's no noise. But why isn't there any policeman assigned to each ward who is walking around, making sure that this, of this uphold it?
Thank you, Ms. Peters. We need to proceed. Thank you.
Just let everybody know, all the administration is here, usually on Tuesdays. The Director Wilson could have been here, could have answered that question. But overall, we're trying to move this city forward together. So you said, did you give me information about when the cleanup's going to be? The cleanup, the South Ward?
We schedule, we don't have.
You don't know yet, okay. All right, well, like I said, I wish everybody a blessed weekend, and thank you for all that you do in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. First thing I want to talk about is for the police officers retired. I actually asked about that question several weeks ago, if the retroactives were included, and we were told yes. So that is, I can't say the words in my mind right now, but that should be taken care of. And our expectation is that that will be taken care of for every single officer who served the city retired. So please bear with the city, I apologize, and this should be handled post haste. Thank you. So I have just a couple of things. Mr. Lewis, I don't believe is here, but that was really great news to hear, because we, each member on this council spoke out about this and how that project was supposed to be handled early on. I thank my colleagues who took this on, on behalf of Mr. Lewis directly, because situations like that should not be dragged out, whether we have clearance from DCA or not to take down properties. If we make a promise, we need to keep a promise. So to Ms. Peters, I hope that we can rectify this situation as best we can. As Mr. Harrison said, with noise ordinances is something our council has discussed, potentially revising the ordinance we have, because it's not very well-written as far as for officers to measure noise and to react to it. So it's something that's around the city, but thank you so much for bringing this problem to us, and hopefully we can help solve some of the other issues you're dealing with, ma'am. So I also want to direct comments to Ms. Wilborn. Thank you very much for always being engaged. Thank you for always being on point and holding us accountable. The rent stabilization board is something every member on this council, I'm sure, we want to make that happen. We want to be very successful, because whether national economic trends are the way they are or not, and the price of real estate and so forth, when a landlord is charging some of the amounts that they're charging, it's because they know that they have a captive market. They know that they have customers and they have renters that cannot go to the suburbs, so they push this as far as they can, and a lot of them do not keep up their properties. And it's disgusting. And so thank you for bringing that up tonight, and that's something that we, in this next year or so, as this rent stabilization, the stabilization board gets going, will hopefully help with that situation and make it more fair and equitable for everyone in the city, because people need to have a place to live. Finally, I just have some announcements that I did want to also talk about, but before I do that, one other point. We only get five minutes to respond in civic comment, and I'm trying to use this as fast I can, so it's not also when we have issues come up, we have to pick and choose what we say, what we respond to. But it does not mean we don't care about what you said. So real quick, I'll be as fast as possible. So things have come up this week. If you know of anyone would be interested and possibly join in the Trenton Police Department, they're having a recruitment effort between now and April first. We need to have officers to serve this city, male, female, whomever. We need them to also represent the city, and we want officers to look like our city. We get a lot of criticism for that, but we need to recruit more officers across the board. So if you know of anybody, I have a couple pamphlets I got from an event. I'll be happy to give them to you. If someone has military experience, that's a great help. And also, as the age they try to recruit is eighteen to thirty-five, if you have military experience, that gets tacked on, so you can be a bit older. I'm not going to say you can be fifty, but they want to have a variety of Trentonians. They're very adamant on that, particularly women. So if you're, you know, a female who would like to be an officer, please send her the police department's way. On April twenty-seventh, there's going to be a baby shower, community baby shower hosted by Capital Health at Thomas Edison State University from eleven AM to two PM. It's a great event. Also, the Lambda Theta Phi fraternity is going to be holding a Lambda Giving Day Food Drive on April sixth from nine AM to two PM at twenty-four Mercer Street. And there's going to be a Trenton Health Fair on Saturday, April thirteenth, from eleven thirty to two thirty. It's going to be a great event. If you know of anybody who would like to come, it's going to be at nine three one Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. And I'm sure everyone in council will be posting information on this in a couple of weeks. Also, the Trenton Community Street Team is going to be having a thesis event coming up this coming Thursday, March twenty-eighth at five PM at Mercer County Community College downtown. And then finally, and I think this is a great opportunity, it's pretty neat, Capital Health is actually recruiting EMT personnel around the city. They have an EMT academy. I have some flyers for that also, but you could also.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Your three seconds over. Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you, CVP. Good evening, everyone. Just want to start off by addressing the retirees from the police department. First of all, thank you for your service. And I do want to say that I was on some of the emails where you were responded to by Ms. Kendra Davis. So I just wanted to just respond to you guys on the record while you're here. Just first of all, I wish that we could provide a timeline or a deadline of when these could be processed, or at least provide you with the date and things like that. But unfortunately, they're not able to do that because they have so much to do with these processes. So I just wanted to say that according to the response, that the PPA police retros are being issued to active employees, then active employees who were promoted. Once they're done, retiree retros will be processed. At this time, retros for active employees who were promoted are being processed. You retire, and this was in response to one of you guys. So it specified the date that you retired on, so it said that you definitely are due a retro for the two thousand nineteen update of retirement. That was back in January twenty-fifth. And then I also further inquired to see if they, if we can at least provide some type of expectancy of when the retirees' retro payments would be processed. But unfortunately, due to the intricate details of the process, they weren't able to provide a timeline, just that they're working. So Mr. Cherry wanted to provide additional clarity. So he says that they do not currently have an estimated processing date. The retros can be a complicated process, particularly for police officers who have a variety of non-standard payments that make up their total compensation. And they are currently working on reported errors for retros that went out. And once those are resolved, they expect to complete the calculations for the retiree retro payments and issue them as quickly as possible. And that response was a little less than a month ago. So they're still working on it. You know, we're just asking you for patience. They are responsive, and we will keep an eye on the periodic updates for it. So, you know, but we appreciate you guys coming in. And just to let you know, we're definitely keeping our eye on it, and the administration is doing their due diligence. So thank you again. I'm glad to hear that the rent stabilization board has received, you know, members or potential members or applicants. So thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for staying on that. It's a very, very important thing. We do have a lot of people who do like to take advantage of the opportunity to price gouge, especially given inflation and things like that. And without a rent stabilization board, they're able to, you know, do, take advantage of these things. So we definitely want to get that back online so that we can get control of the rental situation with our city, so that our people are not priced out of our communities. Because if we're priced out of Trenton, there is nowhere else to go. So we want to make sure we get ahead of this. I want to say, I want to also encourage those in your communities to get involved in your community. Each neighborhood, I would say, if there is an existing neighborhood association, a civic association, please get involved with them. You can work with your association to address these types of things, noise ordinances, people not curbing their dogs and things like that. I would encourage the neighborhoods to, you know, organize amongst yourselves, to organize cleanups, to communicate with your neighbors, to curb their animals, you know, pick up after themselves and things like that, and work with our elderly in our community too, to make sure that they're not taking on the burden of people that are, you know, taking advantage of them, you know? And, and definitely allowing dog mess to be on their yard. So we just want to encourage that, because our police is definitely overwhelmed. We definitely need more police officers. We need more inspectors. We need more patrol on our streets. We understand that. But we also need to police ourselves and be more involved in our community. So I just want to encourage that before we end here tonight. And shameless plug, The Young Professionals Network is having an open house at the Lobby Club on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, from six to eight PM. This is a network geared towards those eighteen and over looking to enhance their professional careers or get involved in civics and things like that. So I just want to invite you all out to sign up for some of our upcoming workshops, like the entrepreneurship and business development coming up. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman Edwards. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I congratulate
First of all, I congratulate our Police Director Douglas and the mayor today for their Women's History Month Event. They honor every director in this building or our administration. They honored several women in their department. And I want to just say everyone was well deserved. The program itself was great. So I wanted to say kudos to them on the Women's History that we had down in the atrium. I want to also address the retro pay. The retro pay is in motion. I know that we've been getting calls about this. Yes, they did take care of those that are current. First, the other ones, all of us have been inquiring. You've been inquiring, council also has been inquiring. The message that we are getting, and we are going to continue until you get it, is that it actually is in the process. There is a protocol. They're following the protocol. Yours is absolutely in motion. It's not that they've forgotten about you. It's not that they've dragged, they're dragging their feet. They're following the protocol of it and then they will get you your pay. So we're asking, we're inquiring. You're not the only ones. We want to make sure. We've been fighting for you guys to get your pay since last year. And we're not going to stop until it actually gets through. So please know that it's not that we don't care. We absolutely do care and it does matter to us. To Mr. Lewis, who is not here, yes, we have been with him back and forth. What he did not say was that there, the reason why his project did not get the attention that it needed was because the company had an emergency project that they had to tend to. And we were working with him. I know he still wanted to get his done quickly, but that, an emergency is an emergency. So that needed to be dealt with and we, they, that did get done. And then we dealt with his project and got that taken care of. With Ms. Peters, if you are still here, I am your West Ward representative, and I would love to have a conversation with you about what is going on in your neighborhood. If not, I have your address and I will be showing up at your place of residence to continue the conversation. Noise ordinance or not, everyone deserves to have their own peace. And early in the morning, especially on a Sunday, you should not have to worry about people waking you up ridiculous, at ridiculous hours. Mr. Jade, thank you so much for coming in and saying thank you. A lot of people don't know to say that and we appreciate it. There's a lot of things that we're working on. We don't get it always right, but when we do, we appreciate hearing the words, "Thank you." Mr. Latimore, we do hear you. Appreciate all that you always come in for always making sure that we're abreast of things that are going on in the community. So thank you for being a voice here. Ms. Wilmore, you know that we love and appreciate you coming out. You keep us on our toes. Thank you so much. So we'll be looking into that. And yes, rent stabilization is a priority for us. It affects everybody here and we don't want folks coming in hiking up the prices so we can't even live decently. We have to make a decision about paying for rent or to eat. That should not be a concern or living paycheck to paycheck because rent prices are so high. I do want to say that on April 27th from 11:00 to 12:00 o'clock, I will be having a sister sewing into sisters at Great Mount Zion Amy Church from 11:00 AM to 2:00 o'clock. That will be for women who are expected mothers. It is a prelude to Mother's Day. So if you know a mom-to-be who will not, will still be expecting a baby yet on April 27th, please let her come our ways. They're going to have a great time. We're going to have all kinds of nice gifts and prizes and we're just going to celebrate the spirit of motherhood. We sometimes overlook the ones that are still about to give birth and I don't want to do that. I want to make sure that we acknowledge them and celebrate them as well. I think that is about it. The Smith Family Foundation, their grants are open. Please go on their website at sffnj.org and you can apply for the grants there. With that, I'm going to read our city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank each and every one of you for coming out and I commend and celebrate those who were celebrated on tonight and the course on family. We forever love your mom. Thank you for doing all that you do and sharing it with Reverend Louise Key Alexander. She's not here, but she's also worthy of praise.
That leaves my comments next. So I'm going to be very short. I don't need to repeat and regurgitate what was already said by my council colleagues. They pretty much touched on everything with regard to the police officers, the payments. The last email that was received stated that the employees that were promoted, that their retro was completed on 2/15 and that they were proceeding to the retro payment for all others at that time. Other than that, in terms of enforcement needed and in terms of keeping up with properties and in terms of noise ordinances and all of that, you know, again, enforcement is needed. So there's only so much that we can do with the city if we don't have the persons, the bodies, to make the things happen that we need to happen and, you know, to hold people accountable. I remember when I ran in 2018 and I told homeowners who were, in a sense, slum lords, that I was going to hold homeowners accountable for their properties. And they weren't going to allow, they weren't going to be allowed to have tenants in their property with not, without making sure their properties were taken care of. And I was told, well, I'm not voting for you for that. And it's a shame that that is the attitude of some people in and out of this city, whether they own properties or they live in this city. And we need to change that. We need to do that together as one and we need to stand up and voice our concerns and we need to understand that we can be like the other municipalities that surround Trenton. We can be just as great as them. We need to stop putting our heads down and just accepting what's being, you know, given to us. But we need to do it ourselves as well. Congratulations against an honoree tonight. Council made all the announcements tonight. So the only other announcement that I have again is Council President Feliciano, Councilwoman Edwards and myself will be doing a Let's Talk South Trenton and at One Up One Down on Cass Street on the 6th of April from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. I've always said the South Ward is the forgotten ward. I really don't see much of my folks in council chambers often and I'm really trying to change that. So with that being said, everyone have a wonderful night and I will turn it over to Council President at this time.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you, everybody, for speaking up. Thank you for sticking around to hear our comments. It is greatly appreciated. For those that spoke up, thank you for being a part of the process and making your thoughts and your sentiments known. Regarding the police payments, I was sending emails with Mr. Bledsoe, looking to get something. And then finally, Kendra Davis did give you an answer, right? Finally, as we were pushing along to find out what was going on. It's my understanding, as I said in the email, that the active folks were done first and then the retirees will be done. But then to your point, when does it start, right? So someone does need to kind of give us an answer as to when that would be, if they can. People shouldn't just be left hanging in limbo trying to figure something out. So I understand your frustration and everything, but know that myself, along with Councilwoman Edwards and others that have been sending emails, have been making inquiry to find out exactly what is going on. So, so your words have not fallen on deaf ears. Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for helping out Mr. Lewis in handling that. A lot of times constituents will email many of us at the same time about the same issue. If one steps forward and says, "I got it," we will yield to that council person and let them handle it, right? Unless they have a problem and they say, "Well, listen, come on and let's, you know, flood them with emails together," then we trust that our council colleague will handle the issue. So thank you for taking care of that, as well as some of my other colleagues that handle the floods of emails that we get daily, right? Thank you, Councilwoman Harrison, for handling that issue as well, for the gentleman that came forward. You're appreciated. And again, to all my council colleagues that step in and do the work, thank you. To Ms. Latisha Peters, she did leave. It was Council Vice President and I that set up and answered the 30 questions with some help of Mr. Kalogi, our attorney, that we made, he made sure that we were good before we hit the send button on what it was that we answered. So we did answer to the very best of our abilities. So, so there was that. If there is any complaints, I guess, about abuse of power with police and things like that, I would suggest that you go to Internal Affairs. I could be wrong, I'm not sure. But if an investigation or something needs to happen, it needs to be reported either to the director, find out who else it goes to after that. But I would file the proper procedure and protocol to have the matter looked into so at least you have it documented. The police officers would know better than me. I don't know, but I'm sure that there is a process that people can go through to report wrongdoings if they experienced it, to at least, like I said, have it on record that you have reported it. So then if it has to escalate forward, then you have the written verification that something was said and done about it. Ms. Wilborn, about the rent, I was telling my students, you know, in our finance class, "Listen, y'all want to hurry up and be grown and move out of your parents' house. Let me tell you what a one-bedroom is costing. Let me tell you what a two-bedroom is costing. You better stay home, as long as you can stay home and be good to your mama and your daddy, and just do what it is that you need to do because it ain't like it was back when we were coming up and things were easy." So to your point, the Rent Stabilization Board, I know that several council people were looking into having that re-instituted. I know that there have been advertisements for people, I guess the mayor, the administration is supposed to be advertising to get members on that. So they are looking to make that active. I encourage you to apply for it. To be honest, you need to put your resume in and seek a membership on that board, right? You're an advocate for it, so why not be a part of the solution? That being said, thank you all for coming out tonight. I appreciate your time. As always, I bid you a wonderful night and a great weekend ahead. Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, it's my understanding at this time that you wish to go into executive session. I'll defer to the solicitor for the reason for executive session at this time.
Yeah, that's right. We could, if I could have a motion to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Certainly. Moved by Councilwoman Frisbee. The second was, I apologize.
Feliciano.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Just to the solicitor, do we anticipate a vote from executives as a result of executive session?
There may be a vote, yes.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you wish to, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion, we have a consent agenda here and I will ask once, are there any items that anybody wishes to extract from this consent agenda as it is now at this time? Hearing none, if you want to ask for a motion to approve consent agenda consisting of 24-102, 106, 107, 108, 109, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115 and 116.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items named by the clerk?
Madam President?
Yes.
So moved.
One second, Councilman.
I'm sorry. When we spoke on Tuesday about 104 and 105, we said we wanted to have a discussion. It did not need to remain as roll call. We move those to consent.
Can we make an amendment to the consent agenda?
Certainly. Have a mo, if you have a motion to move 24-10, I'm sorry, 104 and 105, VP?
Yes.
Motion to move resolutions 104 and 105 to the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So moving second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. That being said, with a reconstituted consent agenda, consisting of those items previously mentioned, being 102, 106, 107, 108, 109, 111, 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, 104 and 105.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as named by the clerk?
So moved.
Second.
So moving second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Onto the lone roll call resolution. Resolution 24-103, Resolution Awarding Competitive Contracting Request for Proposal Fair and Open Process in accordance with NJSA 1944A 20.4 at SEC to FCC Consultant Services LLC for computer technical support services for the City of Trenton's Information System for a period of three years from date of award in an amount not to exceed $2,551,617.17. That's CC 2023-13.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Before we move on, I believe we did not pull Resolution 24-115. It was originally a resolution for Joseph and Mary Ravino Way, which was, which is now an ordinance.
Right.
She is correct. That item was pulled by law.
So I'll just make a note for the record that 24-115 was not a part of the consent agenda. It's now an ordinance that's going to be considered today by city council when introduction of ordinances come up.
We'll note exactly Mr. McKeo's words in a minute.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
My apologies. Moving on to...
We have to take the roll. Any questions, right?
But do we need a motion in a second, I believe, for that?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
This is for Ravino Way, right?
No, no. Ravino Way's been pulled.
24-103.
103, correct.
Abstain.
Wait, what are we doing? We're vote, wait. One second, let's back up. We're voting now on 24-103. We moved the Ravino Way to an ordinance now, remember, because they drafted it as an ordinance. So we'll get to that at the first reading in a few minutes. Right now, we are voting on 24-103.
Correct.
Thank you.
And my vote was yes.
Okay, so we were at roll call for 24-103. I'll begin again. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilwoman, Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance 24-20, ordinance supplement, excuse me, ordinance supplementing and amending Chapter 309 Water and Sewer of the Code, City of Trenton by adding Article, excuse me, Article 9 mandatory replacement of lead, of lead service lines in conformance with New Jersey state law. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve that ordinance?
May I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
So moving second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-21, Ordinance Amending Ordinance, I believe that's 2018-18, entitled, An Ordinance Continuing Certain Positions Fixing Salaries, Salary Ranges Therefore in Setting For certain Regulations for the Implementation of These Ranges for ASME Local 2286, Senior Radio Dispatcher.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24-22, An Ordinance of the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer, New Jersey, Amending Ordinances to Rescind Special Assessments in Connection with Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Which brings me to ordinance, and this would then be ordinance 24-23, Ordinance Authorizing the Additional Name of Joseph and Mary Ravinow Way to New Rose Street.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.